I'd like to call the Eastline Board of Finance amended special meeting to order. Today is Monday, March 25th, the time is 5:31. I'd like to call the meeting to order and start with the pledge of allegiance. All right.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Next on the meeting is delegations where members of the public can speak to any of the items that are on our agenda this evening. Is there anyone here from the public that wanted to speak? If not, we'll move on to new business. This is part of the budget process where we are going to review all the different departmental budgets. We've already started the process last week with a number of the town departments. Tonight, we are going to proceed with the budget review of the Board of Ed. Given that the Board of Ed budget is a major portion of the entire town's budget, we devote the entire evening to the Board of Ed. So we'd like to welcome our superintendent.
Yep. And Chair of the Board. Mr. Baumann's gonna open us up.
Start up, okay. Welcome, Mr. Baumann.
Thanks. So thanks for having me and appreciate those who were able to come and do the tour today and some Board of Selectmen as well who were able to come to tour the high school. And if you weren't able to come, we can set up another time so you can see, because I think visually it tells a lot more when you actually see it versus we have some pictures or you hear about it. Seeing it is great. So just want to talk, you know, so when we present this budget and what we've put together, we think we've balanced fiscal responsibility with maintaining and continuing a high-performing district. And that's kind of what we're trying to balance, right? Is how much do we spend to ensure that our students and our district is a high-performing district? And, you know, so when I look and reflect on some of the fiscal responsibilities and things that we've done, you'll see we have over a million dollars in grants. We don't have a grant writer. It's through the efforts of this group that we've been able to achieve a million dollars in grants, which is significant, many, much more than we've been able to do in the past. We also, every time a role is vacated for retirements and things, we do look at those roles and say, should we fill those or not? And you'll see there's a couple teacher roles that were able to maintain our class sizes, but were able to not fill those retirement roles. So those are things that we're always looking at as, you know, can we, how do we manage the district and be fiscally responsible but still deliver that high-quality education? And then one thing that some of you saw today is our EMT, things like that EMT classroom, right? So we now are offering an EMT class, and it's such an interesting class that we have four students from Old Lime, Lime Old Lime, and four students from Waterford who are coming, and they pay a tuition that goes to the town. I think it's $24,000 or something that the town will get. So these are the things that we're trying to be creative. We're trying to come up with ideas of how do we deliver that great education, again, while being fiscally responsible? The other thing, there's two other things I just, I want to talk about, and one is about achievement. And it really hit me at our Board of Ed meeting, yes, on Monday, last Monday. And the breadth of achievement from our students is pretty remarkable. So I'm gonna read off a few and apologies, but it's just remarkable in the breadth of what they achieve. So we have Emma Frisbee, state champion for Poetry Out Loud. We have Tom Matlock, New England shot put champion. So he won states, went on to regions, won the region. Our science bowl team, regional champs going to nationals. We have Nadia Vera, sorry my handwriting, sixth grade. She published a book, The Crystal Quest, which began as a fourth-grade project in elementary school, and now she has a published book in sixth grade. Much more than I ever could have, I could do now. We have 10 students from the high school who were selected and performed in the New England Music Festival. And we have three state championship teams just in the fall and winter seasons and a bunch of ECC championships. So we talk about, every student's different. Every student needs different achievement and focus and cares about different things. But when you hear about the different things that all these students did, it's pretty amazing in what's going on in our schools. So then, so that's kind of the responsibility and the performance. The last thing I want is the investment in our facilities, which you guys had a chance to walk through. And it really hit me, we did a walkthrough a few weeks ago, a month ago, month and a half ago, lose track of time. And some of the things in the high school, when you're walking through, you're like, wow, you know, if we're telling our students we want them to achieve, we want them to invest their time and our staff and teachers to invest their time administration, I think there's a little investment that we have to make to make sure the facilities are at least at a certain level. And some things that, it really took Kevin Markku, our new athletic director who came in, and he mentioned to me, which was, helped me understand, he's like, I come into the high school, I look around, how do I know what school I'm in? And it's like, well, I never realized that because I've come into the high school a million times and my kid's gone through the high school, so I don't really think about it because, of course, where else am I? And then I stopped and looked around, there's nothing that says you're in Eastline High School. And then you walk through and you look at the locker room and you see the doors, no doors on lockers, and it's just old and needs refurbishment. You look at the opportunity of optimizing space. Our space is limited by the walls of our school, but it's not optimized. So you look at the library, which was probably a great library 25, 30 years ago, but there's a lot of books all over the place, and we need space for collaborative discussion and things like that. You look at the auditorium where we could have more college-like class lecture-type talking, if we could change the configuration of the chairs and put some power in and things like that. We talked about, you know, walling off the big commons area, which would create a cafeteria versus, and a study hall area, a different area, which would give us some advantages for food service, but also advantages for how we run the school. So I think there's, what we've noticed is some of that, so that's where you're gonna see that $250,000, which is an increase, flat increase to say, we can't do everything. But if we can do it each year, tackle a couple things. You know, first for me, you know, library, auditorium, and the locker room are kind of three areas that if we could tackle those, and all we can do, we haven't specked it all out and costed it all out, but if we could do those, that would, that would be a huge difference in our school, in the high school, and make a huge difference, I think, for students, teachers, and the administration. So that's what you're gonna see. Jeff's gonna talk through this in more detail, and I know you'll have a lot of questions. But that, that's the approach that the Board of Ed and the administrative team took as we looked at our budget and what we wanted to achieve this year. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Baumann. We're gonna roll through a couple of slides, and some of these, many of you have seen before, you've heard me and others talk about, starting with our budget workshops. We do a lot of upfront work as it pertains to the budget, starting at the school level where they build their budgets and then they send those up to us at Central Office, and we comb through and do a lot of work at Central Office, meeting with each principal, having the two workshops. On slide two, you can see with the, with the Board of Ed, we've invited Board of Finance and Board of Select members to some of those workshops over the years. We really want to be transparent out front with what we're presenting and what we're bringing forth for our budget and what our needs are. And that helps us and helps me as the superintendent roll into that beginning of January presentation to the Board of Ed. So there's no surprises. The Board of Ed, out of the gate, knows, you know, where we're at and what we're looking for. And that helps save time as we then deliberate over the course of January before sending things down to, down to the town. So those workshops are very important. We're proud of that, that process. Just a little bit of preliminary budget history. We wanted to just kind of share a little bit of a look back, '22, '23, starting with, you know, where we were when we rolled our budget over right out of the gate. '22, '23, we were at a 7.03, and ultimately, the town in the end approved a 3.64 that year. '23, '24, last year, as we all know, was a pretty rough year. We were very high as it pertains to budgets. We were at 10.19 when we rolled over, and the town ultimately at referendum approved a 6.80. And then you can see as we roll into next year, our initial budget workshop on the 20th, we came forward with a 6.89 percent. That was just out of the gate. Here it all is, and then we do our work. And we brought that down to a 6.08 percent increase, and then the Board ultimately adopted a 5.77 percent increase. Now, Rich, I know in a couple of questions that we received, we did add into those questions who were kind of wondering where the Board landed in between those years as well for what the Board approved. So that information is in those, those questions, which I think all of you had received from Mr. Gervais earlier. So hopefully some of that will help too to reference if you have those. So current year operating budgets, to put those into dollars, into context, current year's $57,789,852. My proposal at the 6.08, after all of our work and our team's work, we brought forward at the 6.08, a $61, a little over $61 million budget. And then dropping it down to the Board of Ed's adopted budget of 5.77 was a $61,124,675 budget proposed for, for next year and adopted by the Board of Education. So just to put some numbers to those percentage increases for next year. What the Board of Ed did to get from our initial 6.08 down to 5.77 is what's on this next slide, slide number five. So you can see, we brought health insurance at the 6.08, and we initially kind of rolled that over. We put it at a 10 percent increase. We dropped, the Board of Ed dropped it to a 6 percent increase over the current fiscal year, and lo and behold, we now know it's sitting, for us, a little over 2 percent, because we have the blended rate with retirees. It's a little over 2 percent, which is fantastic. It's gone down and it's, that's a very favorable increase, you know, a little over 2 percent. So going from 6 percent down to 2 percent is saving roughly $250,000, $260,000. So 60, Mary Ann, 68 or 62, or 65,000 per percent?
$5,000.
65,000 per percent, so we can, we can reduce. So right out of the gate, there's 250,000 roughly that, you know, you all can, you know, please reduce, so to get us down to where we are for our insurance number. Salaries, we took a hard look. As Mr. Baumann mentioned earlier, our positions at the elementary level, we can reduce through retirement and attrition, we can reduce two positions. So that reduces $191,884. We're not filling those two positions. So we'll talk a little bit about that. We'll show you some class size numbers in just a second. We did have some additions, and the Board of Ed did put some additions in. One was middle school sports. We heard from a large member, many members of our community as it pertains to the middle school and middle school sports, and working with our athletic director and our middle school principal and the board, we added in $10,000 adjustments to include, you know, volleyball as well as soccer at the middle school level. We already have swimming, and we already have basketball occurring at those, at that level. Then nursing. You all, I won't reiterate what happened with the Visiting Nurses Association, but VNA dropped regionally, all the schools that were part of VNA. That was abrupt. That happened in January. So we are going to be hiring our own nurses, and we're in the process of finalizing that. And luckily, most of them that were with VNA, that worked for us, are going to hopefully come back to us. So we're in the process of, again, finalizing that. But we needed oversight. VNA took care of all the admin components to that, so we decided, you know what, would be in the best interest of saving money and resources, we're sharing a health, a nurse supervisor with Waterford. So Waterford will pay 50 percent, and we're paying 50 percent. So we've got one person going between the two districts to help with subbing, trainings, et cetera. So rather than hiring our own, we're splitting the costs with, with Waterford, which makes sense. So that is already underway, and we'll be interviewing with Waterford for that person hopefully next week or the week after, or after April vacation. But we did have an adjustment of 60,000. We might be able to find some savings in that, actually. We think that actually can drop, so we're looking more closely at that, just kind of where those numbers land, who takes insurance for our nurses now, because again, they all work for VNA, they're coming on and board with us, we don't know exactly who's gonna take insurance, that could be a cost. So we're working through that, but we think that, that number, that 60,000 will decrease. We had savings in contracted, additional contracted services as we kept looking between January and, and now, so we've got some savings there. And then Mr. Baumann mentioned the building improvements. The Board of Ed decided to put that 250,000 in to begin trying to tackle and assess some of these areas at the high school that we can, we can work on starting some upgrades. So all said and done, the 6.08 came down to the 5.77 percent increase over the current fiscal year. Wanted to share our per pupil expenditure slide. Always a good slide. This came up with the Board of Selectmen, they were asking about this, so we, we wanted to put this in. We still do a very, an excellent job of providing a high-quality service, you know, to our students, and our scores reflect that, where our per pupil expenditure is lower than many districts who have lower scores than we do. So we're doing, we're getting, I always like to say, we're getting a great bang, Eastline students are getting a great bang for their buck in relation to what we pay for each student, but how well they're doing. So that's an accountability of, you know, everybody's hard work and, you know, where we are as, as a district and our focus fiscally. Fixed expenses, we like to share this slide each year just to outline, you know, 96.05 percent, you know, of our school operating budget is focused on fixed expenses, contracts, negotiated contracts, contracts of transportation, contracts like we had with VNA, which is now gone, which are our staff. But all of those contracts, especially our, our staffing contracts, all have fixed costs. So that's a driver in the percent increase. You know, if, right out of the gate, prior to dropping the insurance down to 2 percent, if you just took our salary rollovers and you took insurance, it was already like a four and a quarter percent increase right out of the gate, just with staffing and health insurance. Now, that's lower because we've been able to get that health insurance number down. So that's a good thing, but a lot of fixed expenses. Class sizes, we mentioned at the elementary level, the Board of Ed has policy and regulations. This is the regulation that outlines our class sizes at the elementary level. You can see K and 1 guidelines sit at 18 students per class. 2 and 3 recommended is at 20, and grade 4 is at 22. So middle school, we sit between 20 and 24. That's the narrative over on the right. In high school, we always try and have, maintain higher than 10 students currently, you know, in a class. But at the elementary level, if you look at this slide, this is where, and I'll draw your attention on the chart on slide nine, over to the average class size column, which is on the far right. And you can see we're sitting within those guidelines, which is where the Board of Ed and our staff, you know, want to be and administrative where we all want to be. And you can see the change, the two reductions, we're eliminating a position at Nyonic Center, and we're eliminating one at Flanders. We've got some movement at Lily B., but it evens out that there's no staffing changes there. But we continue to watch kindergarten numbers to see, you know, Nyonic Center has a higher average class size for kindergarten, 17.5, that's at that top end, and you'll notice Flanders is at 11. So we continue to circle back in these numbers weekly to see, there might be some more adjustments we need to make, one way or the other. But as of right now, they're falling in the guidelines, and this is the sweet spot of exactly where we want to be as a, as a district, and we're able to reduce two positions and not fill them. Middle school and high school, just some enrollment projections. There's really no change at the high school. We have, you know, one student count estimated or projected for enrollment last next year, 700 down to 699. High school's got a little bit of a dip, 926 down to 907, but that, we've got that bubble, we've had a bubble that's gone through, went through the middle school, now it's at the high school. And if you remember, a few years back, we eliminated a whole Kiva because that bubble was going through. So we've been tracking it, and we've made adjustments as necessary. But it's just at the high school level, it's so spread out that there, there isn't room currently for any, any major adjustments, but we're watching, you know, class sizes and numbers as we do at the elementary level. Total Salem enrollment is included in that at 137 students. We wanted to add in, so you know how many Salem students we have at the high school as well that, that helped make up. And again, all the Salem tuition, I think it sits around $3 million roughly, a little, maybe a little, a little under $3 million. All that tuition, you know, goes to, goes to the town. So you see that. So requests. So in the 5.77, there are a few requests, needs that we talked about on slide 11 that we have, we're looking to add in. These are, these are needs of the district. One being an additional special education teacher at the middle school level. We continue to have an increase in special ed numbers, most districts do, but we have a, a need to add to keep our caseload sizes at the, the optimum level for, for our teachers, special education teachers. We have a board-certified behavioral analyst stipend that we want to provide, and that would be provided to help with trainings for pairs and supporting paraprofessionals as one example. So we would be looking for, we put in for a stipend for one individual who's a BCBA in the district. We want to hire a part-time board certified, another board certified behavioral analyst, but that's offset by, right now, we contract out for that person. So we're basically just, it's an offset, and you can see the contracted service line underneath. That would be eliminated. We hire the person on our own accord, so that's a wash. Our ELL and ML, really it's, the language has changed, more so to multi-language learners now rather than English-language learners. Our MLL population has increased. Since 2019, we were at roughly, it was 58 students in that world, students that required English-language services. We're now at 108. So we've, you know, just about doubled or more than doubled in that population since 2019. So we're in the need for a third ELL teacher. We'd have one, I would mention one middle school, one high school. Currently, we have two, and they're split between the three buildings. So that is absolutely a need. Some stipends, additional stipends for social workers, school psychologists, and speech pathologists. We have team leader stipends for our other individual lead teachers, and we would just do it for this area. And then our middle school coaching site, talked about the middle school sports, and our high school stipends for two marching band instructors. Currently, they're raising money off of the cans that they collect, and they're, they're using that money for, you know, the instructors, they, we're better served using the money they collect and raise for instruments and things of that nature, you know, upgrades where we should be funding, you know, marching band instructors. And it's, like, it's not a lot of money, $5,316. So total 196, 631 is in that 5.77 percent increase. Talked a little bit about special education, our prevalence rate. This has climbed. You can see from 2018, 19, you know, we were below the state average at 14 percent. This is always, you know, where we was a year behind. Last year's data, we were at 19. The state has caught up. This, you can see the state at 16.7. They're at, where that came right now, about 17, 18?
Aren't they, have they published yet, but I think they're closer to the 18 mark now?
Yeah. Yep. So they're closer to where, where we are. We're probably sitting between that 19 and 20, you know, percent currently. But, you know, that's the prevalence rate with a district of, you know, 26, over 2,600 students, 2,650, you know, 19 percent are identified, you know, under special education or have a, you know, a, an IEP, an Individualized Education Plan. So you can do the math, you know, with that. And we provide a very good service, you know, for students in our town, and that's an important thing to do. Grant funding. Mr. Baumann mentioned that we have accrued over a million dollars in grant funding. You know, last year, we'd only accrued about $125,000 roughly in grant funding. We've worked very hard. Kudos to, you know, Mrs. Davis, Mrs. Fazio, Mr. Vasulo, who's our pathways coordinator. They have really worked hard. We've all have worked hard to raise and reach out to state and tackle and obtain other grants. One of them is actually a three-year grant that's funding a additional psychologist at our high school. So no cost to the, to the district, to the town. We're funding for three years a additional psychologist that's really helping out, you know, our students at the high school level, given the needs for mental health. That's not going away, and that continues to, to expand. So just to give you an idea of the grant funding, the High Dose Tutoring Grant, which was a big one, 491,000, that's providing a number of middle school. And we were working high school, but the high school, the high school didn't work out, I don't think. We're still, we're only at the middle school level, High Dose Tutoring, correct?
No, I was in the ninth grade.
Did we do the ninth grade?
In the ninth grade.
Okay. All right. So we did make it happen. Okay. All right. But a much smaller number. But, you know, how many tutors were we at right now with middle school?
We're at 11 tutors.
So we've got 11 tutors that we're funding that are coming into the middle school to work with students who, in math, to provide additional supports in the area of math. And that's all grant funded, which is excellent. Couple of shared services and cost mitigation efforts we wanted to bring forward and just make mention. You know, we always are looking for opportunities to collaborate. We've done it for a number of years, you know, with the town in some varying capacities. Utilities is one. We have a joint bid with the town that Mrs. Stevens, as well as Mr. Bregaw, had formulated to, to save on electricity. So they locked in a lower number on electricity together, so that's a joint, a joint bid that happened. Talked about the nursing supervisor with Waterford, the shared service there. So that's, you know, we could have hired our own probably for 80, 90, even $100,000, but we're sharing that. So we're looking at a 50,000 each district cost. So there's savings there. Financial software, we're, I know Kevin and Mariana and company are doing a lot of work getting, trying to get Munus on board, and that's going to be a, you know, a joint effort, and has been a joint effort. You know, we provide you all the mail courier. We pay for that and cover the cost of that, and he travels around town and drops, you know, the mail off at all different locations, one being the town hall. Two bottom ones are interesting. We talked some about the EMT certification course. Mr. Baumann mentioned that, that we are taking a regional approach to that. One of the few high schools in the state that provide an EMT certification course, which is phenomenal. We've got a great instructor, and we've got a waiting list now. We've got four students from Waterford and four students from Lime Old Lime, as Mr. Baumann mentioned, that are coming and paying tuition for that through the course of next year, and that will generate $24,000 that will go to the town. And based on, you know, how many kids we can fit, generally the class size can be 16 to, I think, 18 tops. So we have to obviously be weary of how many we can fit in the room, use of space. But that's, those regional approaches are things that we're really working to try and do more of. And that leads to my last one, that regional remote learning project. So this is something that has been in the works for about a year and a half, almost two years now, where there's six participating districts around us, Waterford, New London, Eastline, Old Seabrook, Lime Old Lime, and Learn is, some of the Learn schools, as well as Madison is going to partake too. So six or seven districts that we are, we have established a consortium hub through Learn, where we all join the consortium, and we offer courses. These would be courses that would occur at night, or on a Saturday, or in the morning early, that our teachers, Old Seabrook teachers, Waterford teachers, they could offer. So let's say, for instance, you know, Old Seabrook being a smaller district, they might want to take advantage of our German course that we teach at high school. So our German teacher is an individual who's interested in this. She could be running a course, and this is what we're looking to set up, she could be running a course next year that they could be taking, and they would be doing it virtually, and part of the time would be coming together as kids from the different districts that are taking part, coming together onsite for some learning experiences as well. But the, the districts pay into it, and then we all pay the teacher as well. So it's just, it's a greater opportunity for more course offerings without having to hire our own teachers at 70,000. And it's giving teachers a great opportunity to do something unique, something different that there, some of them are excited about as well, to be able to teach like a college course, you know, in the evenings synchronously, asynchronously. So exciting opportunity, and that will go live next year. So we're in the process of finalizing the course offerings, and we've, we've got about 15 teachers in Eastline that are interested in it. So we're excited about that, that opportunity. And then there's capital. So hopefully you all had a chance to take a look at some of the capital items. We have some, a couple of major capital items with roof projects that we really need to tackle, and we don't want to get bogged down with pushing these down the road, because the more we wait and the more we push them out, the more they're going to get jammed up and cost the town more money. So three major ones are, in roof projects, are the Aquatic Center. The Aquatic Center, and there's reimbursement in this. So the far-right category, we get a little over 40 percent reimbursement from the state. So we put the reimbursement amount in that we would be looking at potentially obtaining as an estimate. But the Aquatic Center roof replacement is the first roof. The other roofs are Nyonic Center's roof, Nyonic Center Elementary School and Lily B. Haynes Elementary School. Those two roofs need to be done. They weren't done as part of the school construction projects that occurred now six years ago, five, six years ago. They weren't eligible at the time for reimbursement because they weren't of age yet, and we could make them last. So why try and do something then when you're going to get, you know, quite a bit of money back? back for reimbursement? So we were able to draw those out further and they weren't quite ready. So the other ones, the turf field, the Board of Selectmen has already moved that ahead a year. We can, we can, that's going to need to be replaced soon, but we can make it another, another two years, you know, with that. But it is wearing greatly and flooding when we have heavy rains on the turf field itself because the drainage is starting to get blocked up as well. But other items, I won't read through all of these. You've probably had a chance to look. We've got interior door replacements, HVAC, ongoing HVAC work, some building envelope repairs, you know, at the middle school. And we wanted to just share a couple of pictures as well. And before I do that, again, you can see the total proposed capital project amount, almost nine million, but then the estimated state, you know, reimbursement, two point, almost two point seven million in reimbursement dollars for those projects. And we've had some discussions, Mr. Baumann talked about it. We're able to see some of these areas, you know, the auditorium, I want to share a couple of these pictures with seating and trying to really change our areas. If you're standing in the auditorium, and I think all of you have been in the auditorium at one point, if you're at the, standing at the stage looking out, you have a left wing and a right wing and those really could be used as classroom spaces, but they have to be, the seats have to be converted. We have to make seats that have armrests that come up so students can put their work, computers, be able to plug in, have power and outlets to those seats. But what a great opportunity for lecture hall style courses that, you know, we can, we could offer kids. So that, and just, you know, general refurbishments, you know, to the auditorium. Locker rooms have not been touched, you know, in many, many, many years, need refurbishment. We need to take, you know, a real hard stand on, you know, we're Eastline, you know, and we have visiting teams that come in that see these spaces that are really in poor shape. It's an embarrassment. And I think we can do better and I think we can, we need to put some dollars towards, you know, fixing these spaces and, you know, that haven't been touched in many years. So doors that are, that are gone, you can see that just were, you know, broken, taken off, were damaged, were taken off. So replacements there. Another kind of closer picture on slide eighteen of some of those spaces. And then South Gym, we have, as many of you know, we have a North Gym, a large gym and a South Gym. The South Gym is in need of a new floor and the space that we're trying to figure out, we have, we just don't have space and we have equipment, you know, in various areas. So we're trying to do some upgrades, figure out space issues, but really kind of make this a more favorable place. Again, this gym is used for fencing. We have competitions, other teams come in, other families. We'd love to use this space, you know, for the aquatics program for birthday parties. Families that come and rent the pool out to have a birthday party, they're paying a fee, paying money. They can use the South Gym for kids to play or have, you know, lunch or whatever it might be. But we can't have kids in there right now, young kids with the equipment that's, that's around there and it's just, it's not a pleasant-looking space. And then I mentioned the South Gym floor, which is another area that we need to replace that, that floor. That floor is definitely gotten its use and we'd like to do the same thing. It's like a rubberized textured floor and that would be our plan. So with that, that concludes our slides. We appreciate kind of hearing that information and seeing some of those faces and happy to talk through any questions that you, that you might have.
So in advance of tonight's meeting, you know, everybody had a chance to look at the budget, watch the Board of Selectmen presentation that you made. And so a number of us contributed some questions and Kevin Gervais circulated those answers to all of us. So I don't think we need to read them all aloud unless somebody would like to or if someone feels that the answer wasn't sufficient for them. While these guys are thinking, I do have a couple of questions that just kind of came to mind as you were going through the presentation. When we, looking at the average class size at the, the Niantic Center School in Lily Behane's in Flanders and having eleven students in kindergarten at Flanders versus, you know, seventeen and a half average in Niantic, do families have any ability to say, I'd like to provide transportation for my child to then go to Flanders or anything like that to kind of even out?
No, because we get, we receive those requests a lot. When we redid the elementary schools, the renovations, we redistricted the three schools, really trying to keep them balanced. If we started allowing that, we would have quite a bit of that occurring and our schools would become unbalanced. Then you get siblings into the mix, sometimes you could have one child going to one school and the other, it becomes very problematic. So we're, we're pretty strict on, that's the school that you're districted to and that's the one that you go to outside of an emergency, a house fire or something, you know, catastrophic that happens.
Okay. And in regard to the Salem enrollment, I can't remember how that contract reads, but does, does their tuition, is that tied right to our cost per student?
Um, I believe I have sent it.
Would you mind?
Sure, sure.
When you say tied, explain that to me when you say tied.
I'm just saying, so if, you know.
Oh, no, they have their own per pupil.
Yeah. Based on the agreement, there is a calculation that I prepare every year and reconcile. So we're always a couple of years behind with the tuition, but then we catch up. I believe I had sent it out to some of you last year and happy to do it again for this year. So in January, we set the tuition for twenty-four, twenty-five based on twenty-two, twenty-three's actual. But within that reconciliation, I then reconcile the previous year's tuition and if they've overpaid, you know, we refund them. If they've underpaid, they, we add it to the, to the tuition. I'll, I'll forward you that, the twenty-two, twenty-three reconciliation. But it's based on pretty much the high school costs and you can see that in the reconciliation.
Yeah. Okay. And then, and thank you again for the tour of the high school because that was definitely very, you know, really puts things in perspective, you know, not just numbers.
Yes.
But one of the things that was mentioned was doing something to differentiate the common space from the cafeteria space.
Correct.
And that there would be money available from the state to help offset that cost, but it's not in the capital improvement project. So I was just wondering.
No, what, what that, those dollars would be through the revenue that the food service program generates currently between what students pay for lunch, what we get for reimbursements, you know, from the state, all of that goes into our food services revenue account. We can't use that money for anything other than cafeteria or kitchen-related items. So we've had a favorable amount of money over the last few years. We've upgraded kitchen equipment. We've been able to purchase, you know, some new cafeteria tables. If we were able to put up that barrier to, to block off, have students use one side for study hall and the other side is just solely dedicated during the course of the day to lunch in a cafeteria, then we could use those dollars in that manner to do further upgrades. But we can't right now because it's a shared space.
But could we use that money to build that barrier?
No, no, that would not, no, we cannot. Once it's built though, then you've got the two separate areas. Yeah, yeah.
Do you have that barrier anywhere in the budget?
No, it's just preliminary kind of a, this is what we could do and we'd have to work with Dr. Lahn and price it out.
Two hundred and fifty thousand.
It could, yeah, it could be the two hundred and fifty thousand that's in the, in the budget. That's a good point. That's, that's, you know, we've put that in there as kind of open for some of these items that we saw today, whether it be library, whether it be, you know, that space, South Gym, et cetera.
And I know one of the line items in the budget that really, you know, stuck out for me was the textbooks doubling in, you know, fifty percent or more increase in the amount that we have to spend. Could you just talk a little bit about what drove that number?
I want to talk about the textbooks and advertising with the reading program and, yeah.
So the majority of that increase is coming from a state mandate associated with the Right to Read Act and we are charged with adopting a primary resource, K two, excuse me, K three, but our Integrated Curriculum Committee really wanted to create a K five adoption, so it was really vertically articulated from K all the way through five. So we are on our third pilot. We're a little tired and we will be making a decision actually Wednesday afternoon. So they're wrapping up their third pilot and what's budgeted is the initial cost associated with the adoption of a primary resource for literacy, K five. So that includes all the textbooks associated with the adoption, the software licensing and the consumables. So that cost wouldn't necessarily continue year after year. There would be a cost, but it wouldn't be that large because this is an initial buy-in year essentially.
So were our students woefully behind in reading?
No, our students are very competitive. We, we're in the top third of our DURG for literacy across the board.
So this state mandate is making us spend this money even though we didn't have a problem?
It is based in the science of reading and so it's a, it's a, it's a good direction to go in. It does put us in a space where we're using the same resources across all grade levels in that it's vertically articulated year after year. So I really, I'm in support of moving in this direction because it's based in science and, you know, depending on what direction we go in, it'll align nicely to our foundations materials that we already have. And so I do think it's a good direction to go in despite us being competitive, competitive within our DURG with regards to literacy scores. It just, it integrates instructional practices that are research-based and it creates a common assured experiences for our kids across grade levels and across schools.
I think one thing, we were lucky with the fact that some districts are really struggling because they might have already just purchased a new program that they wanted and it doesn't align with the state's mandates. So they almost have to start over basically. They've just spent this money and now they've got to change gears. We were lucky we weren't in that position, but we're mandated to put something in place.
And the state did provide some grant funding. There's about eighty-two thousand dollars that we, we have over the past two years. I've used some of those funds to actually support purchasing materials to pilot programs, but we'll use the rest of those materials to support professional development moving forward for teachers upon adoption and supplement some of the costs for the resources that we'll need.
Okay. And one of my other questions, I don't know whether it's for Eric or, we've spoken a couple of times about the idea of a fundraising for the school system, like foundation of...
Yeah.
And I know last year it was in the hands of the attorneys, I think.
Yeah.
So just wondering where, exactly where we are in that process and when you think it'll...
Yeah, it is progressing. We've had a couple of meetings over the last few months. Tim Hagan, Barbara Sengis and Ryan Schrader, former Eastline Board of Education members are all leading the charge right now. So the website is being populated. Everything is in, they formulate themselves as an LLC. They're just starting to figure out, you know, how and getting the message out on, you know, and beginning to raise money and funds.
That's why I brought it up.
Yeah, yeah. And we're, we're taking the tour on the road. We're going to meet with the PTAs, going to meet with the Board of Ed in May. So next year, they will start the, really over the summer, next year they'll start the generation of money. We have to be careful because we don't want those funds to supplement, or supplant, I should say, but they're going to help, I think, to offset, you know, things that we might, you know, need across schools. But it's going to take a while to generate dollars, but you never know. You might get an alumni who donates a large amount of money, which would be fantastic as well, but, so stay tuned. It's coming.
Great.
Can I ask a question? How do you determine what stipends you offer to teachers that do extra? I assume it's for extra things like after-school activities, stuff like that, right?
Yes, it's really through contract negotiations. They're all laid out in the, in the contract as to what stipends, you know, we offer. Sometimes we may not fill one if we don't have a, a person that is interested in taking on the role or, or the stipend position, but they're, they're generally negotiated in part of the contract.
Okay. And another quick question. On the slide that dealt with the grant funding.
Yeah.
The, you mentioned the mental health specialist and that it was a three-year contract. What happens after that? Will that become a new position permanently that'll have to go into the budget?
It will have to come into the operating budget, yes. We hope at that point, you know, we'll, through attrition, we'll have a retirement of some sort, a position we will not fill. It's interesting, at the high school level, next three to five years, we're going to start to see a handful of retirements coming through. So we're really going to have to take a hard, close look at, you know, positions that shift, positions that may or may not need to be filled, but that would be one that we would want to roll into the operating budget. That's the only problem with grant funding, you know, when you, you do with staff, sometimes you have to, you know, you have to roll them in, but we would want to do it through attrition and it gives us some time to kind of plan that out over the next three years.
And similarly with the tutoring, are those positions that will have to be continued or they're just...
Not that one. That's just a one-hit and then it goes away and stops. So we've contracted through a, an outside company that has hired the individuals, so we don't, we don't hire them, we don't own them. They just come in, they provide the service and that will end. Yeah, that won't, that won't go into the operating budget.
One more quick thing. If I remember correctly, in last year's presentation, you had a graph that showed the, some measure of how successful the students were versus the class per student of Eastline and various towns. Am I remembering correctly?
Yeah, that was there.
I think that's in here.
Is that in here?
That's the four quadrant.
Yeah.
Well, I see the per student, but isn't that the ranking, the graph, the chart with the per student expenditure?
The per pupil expenditure?
Yeah.
I'd have to go back and see Jay.
I thought that was the ranking.
Is it based on the student or the, or this amount spent?
Yeah, I thought it was the ranking of the amount spent.
Well...
So it's slide six.
Yeah, yep, I'm looking at the per pupil expenditure, yeah. That's the amount that, that we, we've done it a couple of different ways.
We, I think you're probably referring to the bubble plot that we've done in the past with the four quadrants and it shows where Eastline falls in comparison to other districts. We didn't do that analysis.
No, we didn't do that analysis this year. It hadn't come up.
I did do it and follow up.
Yeah.
I mean, if it's not a big problem, because I'd like to see, you know, I, I realize what we spend is, is pretty reasonable, you know, kind of middle of the road, but I'd like to see where our students fall for that money that we're spending.
Sure.
Yeah.
Good point.
Thanks, Jay. Rich, I think you had your hand up.
Yeah, nobody else.
I don't want to call on you. Not my job.
Yeah, so one question I have is, I'm trying to find the right slide, the one that had the supplements, the stipends.
The stipends.
Yeah. Which slide number is that?
Slide eleven or that had it on there?
Yeah, eleven. Okay, so I, I understand that the aspect of stipends, but the, one, two, three, the third from the bottom, how many social workers, school psychologists and speech pathologists do we have that it warrants a stipend as a team leader?
Yeah, we have at least five each week.
Yeah, and they're spread across the schools.
District-wide, yeah.
This is a district-wide stipend, yeah, where you have, you have stipends for team leaders in one building.
Right, 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 right.
Yeah.
So we have five speech pathologists in the district now? Wow. Kudos. I like that. That's an important...
You're familiar with that position, yeah.
Yeah. Another couple of questions. In terms of the high school, it's, the other schools are mentioned as maximals and the high school, I understand the diversity of program and there's been talk in the public of, you know, why do we offer courses to so few kids? I wonder if we have a maximum for class size in the high school as well as that ten minimum?
It really depends on the size of the room. We have, we've had like a math class, for instance, with upwards of, you know, 29, 30, 30 students in it. PE classes, obviously much bigger. But it's the, a lot of it is the capacity, like the science labs can only hold so many students engaging in science experiments and so forth. So that brings forth, brings forth most of the variation.
Oh, okay. And do we run into situations where, I know at a lot of colleges, if you're not on the right cycle, you can't get into the class and you have to wait, you know, like maybe two years to be able to take it. Do we have kids that are not able to take classes at the high school?
We do.
Because they're full and then are they able to take that before they graduate?
We, it, that's in the elective world for the most, we always make sure, you know, the core content areas, what they need, their 25 credits for graduation. They can achieve. A lot of that lands in the electives, like the culinary class, for instance. And Mrs. Kelly was talking earlier when we were walking through, you know, and 150 students that were interested that they couldn't take that course. Some won't get in, some do. Generally, you're sophomore, junior, and senior year, you know, you're getting into those versus as a freshman. But some are boxed out of electives. They keep trying. Maybe as they roll through the years, they can get into those courses. That's where we try and offer, you know, a wide variety of offerings.
Okay. And then for the AP curriculum at the high school, is it still a 10 minimum student for those classes?
We, we still try and hit that 10 minimum. I can't say, you know, in every class, especially classes that require, the students might have IEPs or involved in special education process where we might have under 10. There are a few AP classes that might fall under 10, that might run, you know, seven. We have tried to, as an example, we have tried to condense at times classes. You know, say French, for instance, French four and five, you know, condensed into one. So, but it, it does happen. And we try and avoid it, but there are times when that, that does occur.
Okay. And this leads me to the subject that you brought up about the regional remote learning project.
Yep.
Is there potential that for the, the wide diverse curriculum that we have at the high school, that some of those needs could eventually be met by the regional remote learning?
Exactly, yeah.
And reduce the need for additional staff?
Well, I wouldn't say reducing staff. What it's doing is providing a different avenue for students to go off and experience other opportunities that we don't offer and us not having to hire additional staff to provide those pieces. But, you know, we don't know where this, where this will go, but that was not the intention of the consortium, you know, itself.
And I don't know if I saw it in the budget, but what is our contribution to this consortium?
So we're still working out the final fiscal analysis of how much, you know, goes in. It's going to be roughly about $8,000 that we contribute in. And on the opposite end, a teacher would be paid, you know, $8,000 to provide the, the course offerings. This isn't a moneymaker. This is kind of a break-even maker is what this is. So we pay in and then we pay out. And we provide an expansive list of course offerings for kids.
Okay, so that's the, that's 8,000 for membership in the whole?
Exactly. Membership in, each district pays in, and then we pay out to the teacher for the course. And each dis, so if one of our Eastlime students wants to take a course in Old Saybrook, then we pay part of that 8,000 into the consortium. That helps offset the cost of that course that then is being paid to the teacher in Old Saybrook.
Okay. And then the only teacher responsibility payment that we have is for our teachers?
Exactly. Yep, exactly. We're just paying for the, paying in for the course offerings. So, yeah, so it's, it's, you know, again, a nice opportunity for teachers to make a little bit extra money and teach like a college course, something different.
Okay. And then at the high school, as part of that 250,000 renovation for the auditorium, I, I understand that your space crunched, but do you really think the kids need to have lecture courses, large lecture courses?
I would love it. I think it'd be phenomenal, yeah, to be able to do that, to have larger course offerings. It would, it would, like you were saying earlier, it would free up potentially, you know, more, more students that might be missing out on different elective-type courses if we were to use an elective as, as an example. Just a unique, a unique opportunity for, for kids to be able to have some larger class sizes that could be taught. Personal feeling. And that 250, Rich, you know, I don't want to say that's solely right now dedicated to the auditorium.
Oh, no, 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 I understand. It's, it's.
Yep, that's an option out of the, kind of our list of, of things that we really want to start tackling at the high school level.
And do you feel like you're really in a, in a classroom crunch at the high school?
Space is at a maximum. As we kind of saw today, you know, we would, we just, we don't have any more of it. So, and our numbers aren't going to be dropping. Enrollment projections, you know, going out are showing steady, even a little bit of a, of an increase out to 2032. But so space is at a premium, yeah.
Thank you very much. I didn't see the responses.
No, no, no worry. I know. Sorry, we were, we got, probably wanted to get them back to you as quickly as we could. So hopefully that helps.
Paul or Tom?
Just one question I had on the grant funding and congratulations on the, you know, the numbers you guys achieved. So the 324, that's the three year, that's, is that 324 a year?
No, no, that's, that's over the, yeah, over the three years, exactly.
So this year we're going to get a third of that.
Yeah, that's over the three years, yep.
Yeah, and do you think there's a possibility we'd be able to, these other ones would be available in the future?
We hope so, yeah. That's, that's the goal. Yep, we want to keep, we want to keep looking for additional ones. We just, Mrs. Baziano just found out today that the, that PEGPISHA grant, we did get that again for next year. So that's going to help with offsetting some costs for, we're doing some sound.
We talked about the sound system in the auditorium tonight, so it won't cover the entire cost, but it's, should cover some of it. We didn't get a follow-up that we asked for, but we don't usually get that.
Yeah. But you know, we, what's not reflected on here too is a lot of smaller mini-grants, mini-donations, things that our pathways program has generated. You know, just loaning space, for instance, Furman's Garage, you know, has been a great opportunity. I was talking earlier when we were doing the tour of the fact that, you know, we could put in, back in an automotive program at the high school with an automotive car lift, but it'd be, I think about hundreds of thousands of dollars. Now we're just going and taking kids to Furman's Garage. You know, we're giving a, some dollars and paying a little bit to the mechanic who's teaching, you know, our kids, but we're not paying for the equipment, which is fantastic. And we've got a great collaboration with town. So we're expanding that across, across the town for different, you know, different businesses that are, that are on site. We've got some interns at Grace down here, so we just keep expanding.
Thank you.
Yeah.
On the, on that same topic, you also pointed out, was it the Community Health Center?
Yes, CHC.
Do you anticipate that, and this is where the cost of the program is built towards the students' families' insurance. So do you see that growing and maybe offsetting the need for continuing with other, you know, paid mental health specialists at the school?
I mean, if mental health needs start to maybe decline a little bit, I think it could, but they seem to keep going up. So this is helping to, to, for us to attack, you know, those additional needs that are coming forward. Would love to expand that, so maybe Denise in the future. We want that to become full-time at the high school. We want to bring it down to the middle school level and potentially offer a dental clinic as well at one of the schools. They're willing to partner, these student-based health centers. And this is the first one that we've partnered with. Great opportunity, again, no cost, you know, to us once it's up and running. And they just charge the insurance of the families. So we'll see the expansion that happens in over the coming year.
Yeah, following up on that, where, where is that located at the high school?
It's right near the library.
Oh.
Yeah, we dedicated a room to it, so they come in two and a half days a week and that's where the counseling. It's not the most ideal spot because you've got families kind of coming in, but you know, it's the best we can do right now. And they thank us because usually they're working out of a closet, they say, or something of that nature sometimes, so.
Right.
Because space is tight. But we hope to, we'll continue to look and see, could there be something closer to like the front part of the building where, you know, people can kind of come and go.
And then I think followed on to, I think it was Paul had talked about the mental health specialist funding. You know, I think the concept of a lot of the ARPA grants that were given, whether they be to towns or to school districts or to other governments, was that it was supposed to be kind of a Band-Aid for, you know, getting through what was the peak of the pandemic.
Yeah.
And granted, we're still in the, I guess endemic now, but, and there are still needs and changes in lifestyles. But through a three-year period, I would hope that that wouldn't be anticipated now that that would be an additional hire. That it'd be something you would evaluate each year instead of going in with the mindset that, oh, this will be an additional hire.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and we, we can and will continue to evaluate. I think at this point though, being asked the question, knowing the need that's there, we would need that position, you know, moving forward. But you, you never know. That's something we'll, we'll, we will evaluate and we'll continue to see. You know, one piece I just wanted to make mention because it is a savings and Mariana and Kevin had worked it out already just this afternoon, is pension. So on top of that health insurance savings that were provided, roughly 250,000, they've amassed 150, $150,000 in pension savings, just some information that they pulled together. So there's another 150,000 that we're able to, you know, to, to remove out of our, our operating budget. So it's another good savings. So just wanted to make sure that was mentioned.
Yeah.
Going in the right direction.
Worked on that this afternoon, yes.
Yeah, yep.
Another, another question. Do you have a partnership with any of the local colleges for kids that are ready to take college courses?
We do, yeah, yeah. Yep, Three Rivers, our ECE courses, you know, through UConn, absolutely, yeah. We continue to try and expand. We, Three Rivers provide us Perkins funding to help support some of our programs. They gave us, I think it was around $30,000 this past year. So there's where we continue, that's an area where we continue to try and expand partnerships as well as, you know, again, the local businesses in town, but things like the, the army bases and working with those to provide opportunities for kids in mechanics, aviation, et cetera.
Do you have to provide transportation for the students?
No, usually not. The students will, will drive themselves or like the aviation and mechanics program, they send a van down and they pick up the kids and, and take them with an adult, one of our adults, to their site and bring them back, which is fantastic. So that's been a really neat partnership.
Yeah, I want to congratulate you on some really innovative thinking. It's really nice to hear that you guys are, you know, kind of on top of some of these things.
Yeah, thanks. It's really, it's so neat because you want that wide audience of kids. We've got, you know, I mentioned about the welding program in the past that we're, we're part of. We had a student last year that took part in the welding program but was going off to UConn. He was going to UConn to be an engineer, but he just wanted to get the experience because he knew someday he'll be working with individuals or individuals he'll be overseeing that might be, you know, doing welding, so he needed to know it himself. So it's kind of a cool, cool opportunity in that sense for a vast majority of kids, whether you're going to college or you're not going to college, you've got opportunities. So that's what we're trying to expand on.
I see that the cost of substitute service is going up. Can you just remind me how we calculate that? I know, is it based on the prior year and then just what you project might be?
Substitute service, yeah, yeah.
Yes, so it's based on the prior year and it's also based on the last few years with COVID. We weren't getting as much, as many subs. That has improved, so each year we're getting more subs and our fill rate is getting higher, so that's why that number is higher.
Thank you.
A lot of long-term subs that we've had as well. Yeah, long-term subs as well.
John, yeah?
Can I have a few questions about staffing?
Yeah.
I'm going to start with the high school. How many teachers do you have to be hired on this budget for the high school?
To be hired next year, we don't have any high school teachers next year that we're hiring unless, no new positions at the high school. That's what you're asking?
Yeah, well, I'm looking at line object code 111. And for the high school, the increase was over 285,000.
Well, we have, obviously, the rollover of their increases, their contractual increases, but there's no, what line item again?
111. High school.
3%, 3.28%.
So that's, that's a contract rollover. Yeah, that's not increase of any staff, John. That's just their step and their contractual, what they're being paid and their rollover with their general wage increase as well as step increase.
And that's the same for the middle school?
Mm-hmm. Yep, well, keep in mind, we have one special education, extra special education that you were hiring at the middle school. So that's an additional cost at the middle school.
And on 112, which is, I believe, the secretary's, the central office is like 81,000. Is that the same thing?
Probably rollovers, but let's, want to check Mariana on. Oh, was with?
A whole position, so the budget was a little less.
With, in the finance office?
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, we had a changeover with, changeover in staffing.
I can get back to you on that.
Yeah, John, why don't we, why don't we break that out a little bit so we can see?
Present also in the central office on 101 administration, that was over 51,000.
So 101. What was the other line item? 112?
Yep.
Yep, we'll, we'll pull those and email those, the breakdown over.
Okay. On 126, which is the paraprofessionals, at the four other schools, I'm already at 128,000 total. Is that the same situation?
That's paraprofessionals.
In total, in the summary?
Yeah, is that all because of this increases in?
Because of the increase, you know, contractual increases as well as step increases.
Yeah, they have a contract, just like the teachers. Yeah, minimum wage as well, that's a good point, has, has gone up. So some of the, at the bottom step for pairs, it sits right at that minimum wage amount. So we need to make sure that that's above minimum wage per, per law.
On 436, repair maintenance at the high school was over 30,000.
436 repairs and maintenance, up 70,000. Were two of those the, the Lily Behanes and?
No, you said the high school.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed the high school.
The bandstand.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, the replacement of the band, the band has a stand that they, when they're doing, conducting.
Yep.
They assemble, they get up on. The current one they've had for many years is, is that?
That's, that's, let me just go back.
All right, well, let me explain that because that is an increase too. We need to purchase a new one. It's become unsafe. So we need to purchase a new one of those. So that was an expense.
Okay, one other.
We'll look that one up, John.
One other thing which I found kind of unusual was on 613 maintenance supplies. If you look at Brandy School, Lloyd Behanes, and Dynamic Center, the amount increase is the same for all three, $4,080. Is that just a mistake or how did it come out with the same amount for three schools?
For maintenance supplies? Yeah, for the three elementary schools is the same amount of money?
Because they're very similar in components. They're all renovated at the same time. Square footage is fairly similar, paintable bigger than Dynamic Center, but smaller, so based on what we've been expending, this is additional anticipated expenses. And also some of the equipment is becoming obsolete now. It's old. So that's basically replacing some of the equipment as well.
Yeah. So, yeah, basically the three schools have the same. Yeah.
The three could be pretty similar.
Exactly. That's exactly what it is. Just keeping consistency across the three buildings. Again, as Dr. Wong mentioned, Lily Behanes is a little bit bigger, but we kept a consistent number across the three schools. number across the three schools.
There you are. Couple more. On 514 with trips, it was over $29,000.
I'm sorry, which one is that?
514.
Field trips?
Yeah.
Yeah, 514 is field trips.
Yeah, that's pupil transportation for athletics. Is that the one you're, 514 is, is that the one you're referencing?
Yes.
Yep. Athletic events, there has been an increase in, you know, the number of, as soon as you might be attending. Transportation's up a little bit, too. Our own buses. That's right. We got rid of our own mini buses. We don't lose those anymore. We go to First Student and First Student does all of the transportation for us. So there's some additional costs as well. We just don't want our own individuals driving kids on their own accord, which used to happen, you know, in the past. So...
I'm going to jump over to Capitol for a minute.
I'll write it down for you.
Have you revisited using grass on the football field instead of turf?
So...
And the reason I ask that.
Yeah, yeah.
Is I noticed that the baseball field is grass.
Correct. Yes.
And on turf, from what I understand, talking to a orthopod who saw you with turf, ACL injuries are three times higher on artificial turf than grass, and high ankle injuries are seven times higher on artificial turf as opposed to grass. And in the pros, most of the stadiums now are going from artificial turf to grass because of that, plus the players like it better also. So, and I know the argument is the artificial turf is cheaper, but it's maybe, maybe not. Now, on the artificial turf that you have on a football field, do you have to disinfect that?
Disinfect? I don't know anything about disinfecting artificial turf. We...
It's naturally disinfected by UV radiation from the sun. It is swept periodically to get...
Come on up, Chris. Come on up, yeah.
Not worrying, people on the TV could hear you.
Yeah, so...
I'm going to sit down for a minute, so that's good.
So to answer our first question regarding disinfection, we do have the equivalent, like a broom system that sweeps it periodically, but there's no need for disinfection. The sun naturally does that in the weather. So that's, I've never seen any studies that have talked about disinfection of that. In regards to the studies about ACL, high ankle injuries and whatnot, I've done my own research and read the studies that were distributed as well. And from what I was able to glean from those is that at the high school level, the injuries are not significantly as higher as those numbers are. At the college level, certainly, and the pro level, yeah, of course.
Have you had any at all?
Have we had any at all? I'm sure we've had, but I don't monitor those.
Few and far between.
Yeah.
Yeah. Maybe, you know, just to your point, want to just talk about the fact that we went with a grass field, what would happen with the usage and...
Sure. And, yeah, and that's a good point. You really can't compare the baseball field to, to the turf field because baseball is one season year and you don't have a bunch of people running around out in the outfield in one spot repetitively over and over. So that's where the wear and tear comes on a grass field. You know, I'm sure most people can remember when the grass field was in play, same thing in other places, that, you know, gets torn up in the center of the field where all the, the action takes place and you try to sod it during the year or, or seed or whatnot. And basically, you have to wait for the spring and the summer before you can use again in the fall. Whereas the turf fields, you can use pretty much year-round, provided they're not snow and ice covered. In my own community where I live, I'm on the school building committee there, and we just put in turf over in that, in that community. And we are quoted, same company, that you can get eight hours of play out of a turf field every day of the year for 10 to 15 years without it wearing out. You certainly can't do that on a grass field, and especially not in New England. So...
The cost, I guess, for replacement is, what, about 1.2 million?
I'm sorry?
The replacement cost.
What's listed in there is, it's about $750 for the turf part of it, and the balance of that is for the track. The track needs to be resurfaced and repaired as well. So it's about $750 or $8 for the turf part.
How about the charges for disposal with the old turf?
I think it's going to be recycled.
So you don't get charged, the school doesn't get charged for it?
It's all, it's all built into the contract cost, of course. Yeah.
Okay.
We can make a new front lawn for you, John, if you want.
I'm going to take you up on that. One other question about water use is, do you use a lot of water on the turf, like especially in the summertime?
Not on the, well, not on the turf. I guess you probably meant the baseball field on the new grass. Is that what the question was?
Well, no, because in the summertime, I don't know what the makeup of your turf is.
Right. It's the, yeah.
But doesn't it get heated up in the summertime where you have to water it down?
I know some places will water their turf if they're being used, you know, just because it does get hot for the players.
Yeah.
I know down south, that's pretty common, of course. We don't have, I don't know too many times at all that we've done it during the summer because we don't get a lot of play on the field between mid-June, say, to mid-August when football team starts again. And I know this year they're even considering doing a lot more practice on the field we have over in the Doyle, which is the natural grass field, at least prior to the season starting.
So this, this turf now is, what, about seven years out?
No, it's 10 or 12.
10?
Yeah, 12, actually.
I heard that maybe you could get another couple of years out of it?
I think we, we do basic maintenance all the time. What we are finding now is a couple of things that are showing its age. One is the way the turf is, it's, you know, the rolled-out plastic and rubber and whatnot the material is. And then before you put in any of the fill, they're called plastic blades of grass, right? And of course, they don't grow, and then you put in the fill material up to the, up to a certain level. So if you have this much fill and your grass is that much taller, over time from being run on and whatnot, the grass is now getting shorter. In some places, it's pretty short, and if you're walking on the field, you can see just like a little skin of green and then the black. So there's places where it's too short that it's not going to hold material for much longer. And that's the primary component of failure that we're seeing right now. So...
And stitching some areas back together?
Yeah, that's the other, that's the other part. We didn't get out onto the field today. Last week, there's a couple of places where it gets, it's gotten torn up and the guys will pull out the fill in that area and stitch it back together and glue it back down and then fill it back in.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Anything else, John?
No.
Okay. I just have one, one additional question. Under the retirement severance object code 212, that's going up 44%, an additional $100,000. Can, can you just explain, like, so someone retires and, and so what, so that's causing this payout? Like, what, what are we paying them?
Sure. So in the teacher's contract, it has, it has phased out, but there are still teachers that are grandfathered in. If, if they give notice, well, it doesn't matter, I guess, when they give notice, when they retire, they are entitled to up to half of their sick days, 87 and a half days, divided over four years. So not only teachers, there are also, our custodian contract also has that in there. Again, it's been grandfathered out, but there are still people that would qualify. So we had some custodian retirees. And then we also had four secretaries that retired this year that, again, are, again, it's phased out for newer hires, but there are still some that are under the old contract. So they will get paid out over, theirs is over three years, I believe. So I think I had, that was one of the questions. So this year, or for 2425, it's the, whatever I have in the budget, but then it's slowly, assuming nobody retires, then it phases out.
Uh-huh. So new contracts generally don't have that.
Correct.
So when people retire in the future.
Correct.
They don't get paid out.
Correct.
Excess.
We've already grandfathered it.
Correct. Yeah, I want to say teachers is possibly 2013, because 2012, and then I don't remember the dates for the other ones, but they are all grandfathered out.
Because I know from, from our perspective and budgeting, you know, you have one or two people that were unexpected to, you know, retire, and that can be 200, 300, 400, 500,000 that you weren't expecting. So that's definitely something.
So I have, yeah, it's all in, on a sheet. I have it all. So assuming nobody retired in four years, that would be zero, but obviously that's not the case. Eventually, it will be zero once everyone that's under the old contract retires.
Okay.
Anything else? Appreciate your time.
No, we appreciate all of, all of you coming in. I wonder whether, Kevin, I see you typing away over there with, I'm wondering whether we could just get sort of an update if, if we're, if we were to incorporate the changes to health insurance, the pensions, switching to the 10-year amortization from the five-year, what that would bring us to. I'm sorry. I figured that's what you had been doing already. Yeah. And, yeah, and I guess as we were sort of discussing at the start of the meeting, there's a few more budget items that will become more clear to us before we get to the public hearing and the town meeting. So we can continue to update this number.
Can you run those numbers by me?
216 for house insurance.
Okay.
And 150 for pension.
Combined for $410,000. That brings the board of ed to 5.1%. Does that sound right now? Okay. So over, I'll show you the screen here. So that drops the board of ed to 5.06%. $2.9 million. Scroll down here. 1.8 on the mill rate. Takes a little second to catch up to me. So about half a percent overall.
So the mill rate increase there goes to 1.84, I think was that?
And then my updated spreadsheet, I'm just confirming it is updated. It's pulling the actual number now, thanks to the, we run the day.com. So if we have a $500,000 home in East Lime, we're looking at a $50 a month increase in our taxes.
How much?
$54.
$54.
And just to be clear, that's the assessed value, not the market value.
That is the, that is the market value, not the assessed value. The market value of the house is $500,000. The assessed value, roughly 70%, is $350,000. So it's the home, it's the value of the home, not the assessed value. So for everyone to keep that in mind.
And so Kevin, in the current budget that reflects the 1.84 mill increase, we currently have 1.3 million from the fund is allocated within the budget right from the get-go, if I recall correctly?
1.5 million.
1.5 million is already allocated.
Correct.
So, so one of the things I wanted to bring up, too, while the board of ed is here, is the $250,000 that you've kind of built in to deal with repairs and stuff like that. And so I kind of want to run it by my accountants out there, but I'm concerned that that money would be going to things that could be addressed in the capital budget as opposed to the school budget. You know, one of the concerns is, obviously, that money then goes into your budget, which then affects the, the minimum budget requirement each year. So, you know, I think I'd, I'd like to have a discussion of, you know, what's, what's the right place for that money? I don't know, Kevin Gervais, if you have some thoughts on that, and if, Mariana, if you want to address it, too.
So, Mariana, if you want to, so I'll just say, something similar to this is, for the last couple of years, the town has an acquisition program, and there's usually a line that says, you know, technology and other, other technology items, or something very similar to that. So we're trying, I'm trying to get away from the acquisition program because now we're paying a 5% premium, you know, 5% interest on that. So the idea is either cash capital or bond it. The bond is almost, you know, lower interest rate than the lease, but we can amortize over five, 10, or 20 years with the bonds. So we could create another line item here for $250,000, you know, between the grounds truck and the capital technology items for $250,000 and move that out of the operating. Do you have any thoughts here?
That's fine. My concern with, with putting it in the capital was, my only concern with putting it in the capital was bonding for 20 years because some of these do not have a 20-year life. But if you're going to do a five or a 10-year bond, then that makes sense because that's probably what the life is. It's just not worth amortizing it over 20 years.
Yes, yep, yep. Yeah, so in conversations with an external accountant we have, we're exploring amortizing certain projects. If they don't have a 20-year life, we can amortize those over five or 10 years within that bond. So you just, you just pay those little projects off quicker. So I think that's how we're going to end up doing the, you know, the $500,000 for the technology and some of those other problems. You know, we had that kind of, that cash capital crunch we were discussing earlier. I think we're just going to move some of those over to the, to bonding and, and just amortize it over a lesser, you know, a couple less years than the 20, obviously, just to kind of help us out for the next few years until we build up that cash capital. So...
So are we saying to move it to capital with the bonding, which would reduce the budget by $250,000 more?
Yeah, that's about like eight tenths of a mill. Yep. So we could...
As long as we have access to it, it'd be great. Yeah, we've considered kind of repairs, so that's why we had left it in, you know, the operating budget, but we can do it that way.
Yeah, I mean, so if it was, you know, if it's in the capital, ideally, I'd like to see, you know, 5,000, you know, not like little operating things, but you know, I think that $250,000, there'd probably be some larger projects, I imagine, to use that there. Yeah. I think, I think it's reasonable.
Okay. I mean, I think we still have to think about that entire capital budget and if there's things that may not make it into this year's. I know we're, we're definitely cognizant of, there's, there's a lot of needs over there. I just feel like we also are tackling a couple of big things on the town side, too, that have been, that we've been wrestling with for a number of years. So trying to balance everybody's wants and needs.
Totally. And just, you know, another wrinkle is the high school roof as well, which I think we said 2028?
28.
28, so, you know, I just want the projects to backlog.
Yeah.
Just speaking of roofs, the projects that you have in the capital request is a roof for the high school, middle school, Lily B. Haynes, and Niantic Center. If you had to prioritize, which roof would you, you have fixed first?
Yeah.
I know they're all probably in need, but because it's, you know, the total is almost $9 million.
Yeah, Haynes is the worst one right now with all of the infiltration that the water has gotten under the, the main top membrane and it's seeping in. So that would be the main one.
That would be your first choice.
Yeah. I mean, that pool roof is...
Pool and then Niantic.
Yeah, Haynes, the pool, and then Niantic is the order. I mean, the pool we're worried about, you get heavy winds or hurricane-force winds, and we're tight, you could rip that roof right off because of the issues of all the rust that's going on between the... rust that's going on between the roof and the beams. If you've been in there, and John, happy to walk through, you see the rust and the issues that are going on in there and rust falling on patrons as well, so.
So you're saying LBH, Lily B. Haynes would be number one, the pool would be two?
Pool, number two, Niantic Center.
Number three.
Number three, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thanks.
Yeah.
Okay, well, this has been very informative and very helpful and I really do appreciate just all the work that you guys put into this all year long. And, you know, we, we have a few more departments to get through and then we'll get through some general deliberations before it then goes to the rest of the budget process. But I think, I think you guys did a great job and the board of selectmen did a great job of bringing the board of finance budgets that, you know, were, we didn't feel like the onus was all being put on us. We feel like you guys did some great work before it got to us, so I am very appreciative of that.
Thanks, thanks, appreciate it.
Okay. Back to our agenda. Public discussion, is there anyone who'd like to speak, please?
Good evening, everyone. Jamie Barshelburn, 31 Makalini Drive. I am here tonight to ask your assistance in locating $60,000 in Purdue Pharma money for drug rehab and counseling and education services in East Lime. We are kind of in need of it at the East Lime Youth, Family, and Human Services Commission. And we would like to know if anyone has any help in providing us the location or whereabouts of that $60,000 that has come in from Purdue Pharma over the last couple of years. And then my second thing is, is I just want to make a mention to the $250,000 we just talked about in the board of ed budget, about moving it to capital from our budget. We had asked in the past to get a board of ed savings account set up, non-lapsing account, and we've been denied in the past. So maybe this is a time to re-look at that non-lapsing account and maybe have further discussions on it. And that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone from the board have any comments that they'd like to make before? All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So won't.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.